Welcome everyone. We're going to call the special Paradise Recreation Park District Board of Directors meeting to order, and would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you everyone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Director Robertson, or Robert, Director Anderson is absent, so we have Director Steve Rodwick.
Here.
Secretary John Stonebraker.
Here.
And Chairperson Alma Green. Thank you.
At this point in time pursuant to the agenda, I'd like to welcome all our guests this afternoon, or I should say early evening, and we're going to proceed to the next item on the agenda which is public comment. This is an item required by state law where anybody in attendance at our meeting who wishes to speak to this board on a non-agenda item, you have that right at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the board about something that's not on the agenda? Okay, I'll interpret that silence as that's not required by anyone today. So moving on to the agenda, item three, new business. Item 3.1, Paradise Recreation Park District Board Vacancy Candidate Interviews and Action. At this point in time, I want to ask the district manager introduce that agenda item to the presence of the board and those in the audience, and then we'll proceed from there. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this item concerns appointment to fill a vacancy on our Board of Directors with the departure of Director Mary Belafay last month, and it's consistent with Government Code 1780 and the Brown Act. What we're going to do is we'll have a little introduction on the item and some of the supplemental information, and then we'll kick it on over to the chair who will basically conduct the applicant interview. There'll be opportunity for public comment, deliberation, and then vote on our board, potentially tonight, to fill that position. The district provided a public notice of vacancy, invited letters from qualified district residents. We got seven really good applicants received by, applications received by the deadline. As part of the process, we've provided a opportunity for candidates to provide a letter of interest, a resume, responses to some questions that we had. We had two by the deadline and one that had submitted materials afterward. Two of the folks did not respond, and we had two that withdrew. So that gives kind of a running count on as to who's here tonight and that score. We do have a board report that provides the names and kind of the accounting for what materials were provided up to that date. So following candidate presentations, board is going to ask questions to applicants, and then we'll see, going from there. One thing that I wanted to provide is we have the board report, there's a summary of some of the dates, there's a notice that was provided, and then just a couple of things are just strictly optional for information. One is vacancy notes and then position information strictly just provided for some context and maybe helping the candidates provide some responses to some questions that might come up, but by no means the criteria, the criteria is with the board purview on evaluating the candidates and seating a good director for us. Mr. Chair, we can either do this in alphabetical order or in the order of the report, by the way, the order of the report is first by materials received, alphabetical order if folks provided additional materials, and then a list of, we did not receive any additional materials from them in the second block there on page two. I'll now kick it over to the board chair to conduct the interviews and appointment process, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dan. So ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate all of you applicants for your interest in serving on the board, and this is how we're going to process, is going to proceed rather. Each candidate will be allocated five minutes to make a statement to the board. After all candidates have spoken, board members may ask questions. Once questions are completed, we will open the floor for public comment at that point in time, and after that, the board will then attempt to deliberate and take a vote on, in open session. I need to remind each speaker, I will remind you during your five minutes when you've reached only one minute left. I'll try to follow that on my cellphone.
You can do it.
Okay, I can have the clerk do that. When you get down to one minute, you'll announce that, just so that would be helpful for everybody. So now, we're going to begin with the first candidate. So with concurrence of my fellow board members, we'll follow the district report on the candidates, and I suggest, if you concur, that we'll interview them in that order based on the candidates that submitted all the materials first alphabetically, and then proceed after that to the next tier of candidates who had a resume only, but then has subsequently submitted some additional information. So first candidate, do we have concurrence, board members?
Concur, sir.
So the first candidate is, and tell me if I mispronounce it, I don't mean to if I did, Jolene Levy, is it Levy? Levy, okay.
So am I giving a statement of why I want to interest in, okay?
Yeah, just to sort of bring it up. We had set aside basically five minutes for each candidate to do a presentation of why, making the pitch for why you're the best choice for the board.
Perfect, okay. So I submitted this, it wasn't something that I was looking into until it was approached by an individual that it would be a good fit for me, and so then I started digging into the materials and everything, but as far as like where I'm at and with work and living up here and wanting to be a part of this, I want to be involved in something and making Paradise and our youth programs, something that my children and their children want to be here for. Growing up, I always could not wait to grow up and get out of here, and having kids, I, this is my dream place. We are rebuilding right now, we moved back up here in May, we're still in the build, we've been building for about two years, but I've been involved in everything with health and wellness. I'm on a Healthy Communities Collaborative, I'm part of the Adventist Health Feather River Health Foundation, it aligns the work that is being done with the Parks and Rec, aligns with our mission and our whole body person and all of that. I'm on the Campfire Collaborative, Everybody Healthy Body, and I'm the president of the Ridge Boys and Girls Club. So for me, being involved in here, in the community that I live in, and making our youth an amazing place to live and be involved with the parks and just exploring and everything that is being done, I just love. So quick and short, I can go on, but if you have questions, happy.
We're going to hear from all the candidates first, and then after that subsequently, we'll then, we'll open up to the board to ask questions. We'll get to that point.
Okay.
Thank you. So I believe the next candidate we want to hear from is Mr. Brian Wilson.
So yeah, my name is Brian Wilson. I've been a resident here in Paradise since the early 2000s, moved up here to coach swim team, and developed a family here, raised a family here. My initial interest in recreation and community service had to do with young people, similar to Jolene there. My role at the time was a coach, instructor, and facilitator for youth programming. That's how I got into my desire to give back to the community. As I got older, I've established my career, my kids have moved out, I'm in a position where now I can change my focus to giving back more in an administrative role, and working on the board would meet that desire. We also rebuilt after the fire, took us about a year to decide what we were going to do. My wife and I discussed kind of the reasons that we had chose Paradise to be our home. Those reasons hadn't changed, the view has changed, our neighbors have changed, but the reason and the desire to be part of this community has not changed. My wife is a longtime employee of the bank system here in Paradise, she's been with the, one of the local banks now for almost 20 years, and we're committed to the long haul, and we expect to be lifetime residents here. As far as my background, I've been involved in recreation and park district management since approximately 2013. I worked with the Durham Recreation Park District in their recreation programs and moved up into management there. I had an opportunity to work in the recreation program in Oroville with the Feather River Recreation and Park District. That gave me the opportunity to work as the interim park supervisor, as well as the interim general manager. During some transitional period there, a position came open at the Chico Area Recreation District in their recreation program, where I worked as a recreation supervisor and aquatics manager. The story there, I thought that was the parish shoes that I saw on the window that I always wanted, and then I got them and I put them on and they didn't fit. And so I took an opportunity to move back to the Feather River Recreation Park District, where I now am the general manager and have been for the last two years. So my experience with recreation and park district management and administration, I believe, is growing, and I appreciate the opportunity to share with management here and with the board. My approach to administration is transparency and accountability. Those are two areas that I really strive to work for every day, and that transparency is internally and externally, and I believe that's very important. So that's a little summary about me. I appreciate more questions when we get to that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, appreciate that. Our next candidate, I believe is president, Mr. Michael Snow.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Snow. I'm here interested in this opportunity because I've been born and raised here, lived here for 41 years. Before the fire, I left to go to Arizona for about nine years, and then came back now. Lost my mom and her home in the fire, and there's been a lot of, a lot of things that we've all gone through in this town, and there's a lot of things that went through my mind about how I can help this town get back to where it belongs, to what I used to know, and this is kind of an opportunity to be a part of that. I've been part of so many things growing up here in this town when Mike Trinka was the board director here a long time ago. Growing up as a young kid, and his enthusiasm and his positivity was a really big influence on me growing up, and all the programs that he had to offer. And, you know, being part of the Paradise Piranhas and the Paradise Bobcats and the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts and all these other programs that were available to me as a kid, growing up here in Paradise was very valuable. It's a very special place here in Paradise, there's not really many places in the world that are like this place, and to be a part of the Park Rec, which I think is super important for the youth growing up here, having those kind of programs that I had when I was growing up, it's something that I'll never forget, something I treasure very much, so to have that opportunity would be very, very great opportunity to have. So a little bit about me, I am a licensed health insurance agent, a locksmith, a FAA drone pilot, I do all kinds of things, and I'm all about accountability and transparency because in my line of work, you have to, people have to, you know, trust with doing the services that I provide for them. So definitely somebody that can be reliable and important to this community, and, you know, my mom built forth home, four home health agencies here in Paradise, the Hospice of the Ridge, and my grandfather built the Paradise Ambulance Service, and so my family's got some pretty deep rooted roots here, and to have any kind of opportunity to do something that would be in my wheelhouse, which is the Park Rec, would be something that would be very interesting, very exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. We have two other applicants apparently applied, I understand staff, but they did not submit any, any information on the questionnaires nor other related information, right?
They applied, they put the submission in to streamline, but when I reached out about, you know, supplemental information, they never responded, and then I checked in with them and they still did not respond, so.
Okay, given those circumstances, I'll open this up to the other board members, but should we concur that we apparently only have three viable candidates that are actually here for our consideration this evening?
This evening, yes.
Okay. So with that in mind, at this point in time, I want to thank all the candidates for your presentations, it's very helpful. We're now going to move to the questions coming from the board, and each director, I'm going to ask that you ask no more than one or two questions of any individual candidate, and direct your questions through myself before they respond. So we're going to start with Director Rodwick.
I guess this is aimed at Mr. Wilson regarding any potential conflict with regard to being the general manager of a neighboring district, just, I'm not aware of any, but if you can, if you have concerns, that would be good to know.
So I believe the question was potential conflicts, being employed by a neighboring district. So my initial research shows that there is no immediate conflict. In doing additional research, I have found one item that has come up within the past five years, a conversation item regarding a director's interest in exploring redistricting boundaries, and being a neighboring district, there was conversation at one point, or at least expressed interest in redefining the boundaries between Feather River Recreation Park District and the Paradise Recreation Park District. In the event that there was further discussion on that item, as the general manager, I would participate in conversation with Feather River Recreation Park District and would provide staff report as such. Being a board member, I would be eligible to participate in conversation, but I would have to recuse myself from any vote. That is the only conflict that I am aware of. Certainly should anything come up, I believe that I possess the understanding of conflict and would be able to identify that area and step back from that.
Thank you.
Each board member, you can ask questions of all candidates, and I'm suggesting that you limit the number of questions per candidate to approximately two or three at the most, and then we'll just go in that order. So you still have more time, Director Rodwick?
I will pass for now, but retain my right to inquire for additional questions.
Very good. Director Stonebraker?
I had a few more questions that, in my head, the first thing I need to ask of all candidates is whether they have any pre-existing relationship with any persons in this room that they might like to disclose.
I can answer that. As a former employee of the Paradise Recreation and Park District, I have, I have worked here before, I believe Director McGreehan was on the board when I was employed here. As the coach of the Paradise Piranha Swim Team, I have given presentations to this board in the past, and as the general manager of the Durham Recreation and Park District, I had occasion to be at a conference with, with the current general manager, and I believe that we attended a social dinner together while at the conference. Outside of that, I believe Director Rodwick may have been at a, at a table that I sat at, at a conference as well. I believe that is the extent of my relationship with anyone here. Supervisor Amick and I were classmates together at Chico State. That is another relationship.
Director Rodwick, do you wish I response from the other applicants relative to that question officially?
Addressing me?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, if any of the other candidates has any pre-existing relationship with any of the persons in this room to disclose. If you don't, then please say that you don't.
The only relations that I have is through meetings, like I've been in town meetings with you, I've been in Rotary meetings and other Paradise Citizens Alliance meetings with Al, and meetings with the Healthy Body, Everybody Healthy Body, and other meetings where phone calls and such were happening, but other than formal meetings, that is it for me.
To answer your question, no relationships at all in this century, but in the 90s, yes.
John, do you have any, any other questions you want to ask?
Yeah, I'd like to ask everybody how you learned of this vacancy, and, I, I will just leave it at that for now.
I think I found this on a listing online somewhere, and I can't quite remember, but I follow a lot of local listings, so I saw it and I responded to that.
Mary and I are on the, we were on the chamber together, Paradise Chamber, we had talked about it through many of our shared boards and community meetings that we had been in. I knew of her position with that, and her and I, when she was moving, I picked her brain about this position and talked to her a little bit about it, and she shared with me what it all entailed and everything, so that was how I found out about it.
Thank you for clarifying.
I've shared with this board in the past and shared with management my interest and desire to serve on the board. This current vacancy first came to my attention, I think through my wife, she heard at the bank that Mary was moving, and then I received confirmation email announcing, announcing the vacancy.
Any other questions, Mr. Stonebraker?
I have quite a lot that I'm trying to go through. If you, if you would like to ask a question, and maybe I could ponder, or do you not have any?
I do have a couple. Mr. Wilson, earlier you expressed that you did some online research whether or not there's any potential conflict if you were put in this position given your current employment, and related to that, I need to ask you, did you share that potential situation with your current district council? Have a dialogue with your current district council on that subject?
The information regarding potential conflict has been shared with district council as well as the currently sitting board. The board is aware of my desire to apply for this position, we have had the conflict conversation with that board as well as district council, and no concerns were brought to my attention.
Thank you. Mr. Snow, your mother's name is Bonnie Snow? You can answer from there if you, if, this is just a personal kind of query, by any chance, did your mother at one time live up in Quincy, California? Your father was up there, okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. This lady, I'm really impressed with you, with your resume and your, and your responses to the question or things, but tell me if, if you were appointed to this board, will you have time to do due diligence on all the work expected of a board member? Are you aware based on your conversations with the outgoing board member, which was Mary Belafay? It's not just board work, but there'll be committee work as well? You're familiar with our regularity of meetings, there's no conflict with any of that, despite all the other organizations you're heavily involved with?
The only conflict I could see is if it was a competing meeting scheduled at the same time, same date and time, I would prioritize, of course, for that, depending on that. There are a couple that I am going to be stepping back from, that I'm involved in, so I'm prioritizing that. My work is very supportive of this and wants me in these types of positions and doing this work, being in the community and doing good for wherever I can, living our mission. So I, I wouldn't see that there would be an issue to participate unless there was to directly, and I would, you know, prioritize based on what the urgency was on that.
Thank you. I have another question for you. How many years have you been involved with Everybody Healthy Body organization? I'm familiar with that organization too, I knew some of the original people that started that.
So I became directly involved right after the fire. My previous board chair of the foundation that I work for, Feather River Health Foundation, Chuck Rowe, was on that and involved in that, and so after he was prioritizing some of his life, and he had suggested that I attend that and see what that was all about and if it fit with all the work that I was doing, so about 2019 is when I got directly involved with that.
And similarly, you're on the collaborative, I think it's the Campfire Collaborative or so?
Yep, on the Healthy Body or Healthy Communities Collaborative that we established in 2019, we started pulling together, and then on the Campfire Collaborative, I just joined that board about a year ago. I've been on the donations committee for several years since about 2019 as well, but was just appointed as a board member this last year.
Thank you very much.
Don't go away. I wanted to keep going back and forth.
Yep.
I see you're in process of getting your bachelor's degree in hospital administration. Is that ongoing full-time, or are you taking it bit at a time?
I'm taking one class at a time, it's something that I pivoted. I have my bachelor's in social and behavioral, so social work is kind of where I had aimed to go, and then just through all the work, I've been at Adventist Health since I was 13, started, I was a candy striper there, and as I was getting my degrees and working, I just worked in minimal jobs as I went to school for social work, and just never left that position or left that employment, and have just bounced around many different roles to where I currently am, and it's just been something that I've wanted to wrap together for myself. And it's just been something that I've wanted to wrap together for myself, not that I need it for my position. Just something that I want to show my kids the importance of education.
Very good. Thank you.
Any others?
Mr. Stonebreaker, do you have anything you want to ask her?
I have a question for all candidates. So while, while you're at the mic, if directors had the ability to agendize items, is there anything that you would like to see agendized for deliberation?
Going forward as like a?
Yes, if you, is there anything that you would like to see agendized? If, if you were to be appointed, that you would like to deliberate on with the full board?
Not that I can think of right off the top, sorry.
Thanks.
I kind of understand your question, but, because I'm not familiar with all the duties of that responsibility. But I do know that you organize programs for the community and youth and all kinds of those things. And I would like to see something that would benefit the youth here in this town and give them something to do. Because when they don't have anything to do, that's when they get in trouble. So I would like to also do whatever I could, you know, help benefit the community as well of all ages.
At this time, I'm, I'm very interested in where the district stands with the, the master plan. Whatever master plan existed prior is, is, is done. And, and the new master plan should be in the works. And that, I, I feel like that should be a, a high priority of this, this district at this time. So I would like to see discussion of the master plan agendized.
Director Stonebreaker, do you have another question you want to ponder?
If I may, I would follow up on your previous question to ask Mr. Wilson if he also believes that he has the time to dedicate to this position.
Yeah, I rec- I recognize the concern with, with the hours. And, and I'm fully aware and committed to that. And yes, I, I will have the time to serve in both roles.
Thank you.
You want to extend that question to Mr. Snow as well?
If he would like to answer, certainly.
Yes, I'd absolutely have the time to allocate for this responsibility because my position of work allows me to do so because I can create my own schedule. So I can do anything really.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask a question for all three candidates and you can come up in subsequent order in response to my question. And my question is this. Since the time you became familiar with this vacancy that was being advertised, have any of you paid additional time to research more about our district on our website or by other means other than just what you provided for our entertainment, our consideration today?
I regularly follow the, the board agenda items. I did dive a little deeper into the, the current budget and some of the existing projects that are listed on the website. I am aware that the district just accepted donation of a new facility. I'm, I'm excited for the district's opportunity with that. I'm interested to see how the programming is, is going to, to work in that building. It's great to have a new building, but the ability to program it and get the people in it, that, that will be interesting. And, and I certainly am interested to follow that. But to answer your question again, a regular follower of the agenda and the meetings and, and do check on the budget and, and the financial reports fairly, fairly consistently.
Thank you.
I haven't dug into it as much as I need to. But I have been asking a lot of questions through individuals that have been involved in the organization. I have gone to the webpage a little bit. I haven't looked at the financials and those types of things. I was early on involved in some of the master planning for the dream parks and some of those discussions. And so some of the agenda items that have come up on previous meetings that you guys have had, I, I've looked at some of that, but have not gone fully into the overall budget and outstanding overall where finances are at.
Thank you very much.
I have not yet been able to familiarize myself with all the current agendas or the current plans of the board. But I have reviewed some of the responsibilities and some of the expectations that you guys might have. So I got a, a little bit of an understanding, but I'm pretty sure that I wouldn't take long to figure it all out.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Mr. Rodwick, do you have any additional questions?
I got one for, one more for each of you. And it's probably on a little bit of a more lighter side. But if each of you can come up and tell me, what is your favorite park facility in the district and why?
Mine is going to be the aquatic park. That's, that's where I cut my teeth. Spent 12 years there coaching year round. I have a lot of great memories. I have a lot of great relationships. And, and it's fantastic that it's still offered to the community. I know what it costs to run a pool and, and the fact that it's still a priority. I will always be appreciative of the aquatics program here in town.
That's a very hard question to answer because there's so many good ones to choose from with so many deep rooted memories in it. But I'd say as of right now, currently, I would say Billy Park. Because it has so much to offer there and it's just so well done there, the way they've renovated everything there. And them allowing to hike down in the canyon, all the trails and everything there. I think that that's a good mixture of everything and it offers an opportunity for people to have weddings and all kinds of events there, which generates memories of a lifetime. So I'd have to say Billy Park at this point, but there really isn't a bad answer on that one.
So I'm right there with Mr. Snow. I don't really have a favorite. I have special memories at every single one. Growing up, the aquatic, where the pool is, was basically my daycare. My parents would drop me off first thing in the morning. I would be there all day, literally, while they were working and doing their thing. So that's where I grew up. I loved it. My kids love it. Even now, I take my grandkids there. It's such an amazing place. The parks, we love walking around. We call it the duck pond. I fish there for many years. I take my kids and my grandkids there. Billy Park, I have so many special memories there. We've had celebrations, celebrations of life, birthday parties. I just love everything that is happening there. The little track for the remote control cars, the things that individuals are getting creative in making space. And then of course, where we have party in the park, I spend a lot of time there. And usually at every single one of them. I love that it is a space where we can all come together as community. And so I, I don't really have a favorite.
Mr. Stonebreaker, it's your turn. Do you have any additional questions?
I, I thought I had used them all up, but nothing comes to mind at this time.
Okay. It sounds like no further questions. So at this point in time, we're going to move on to public comment. I'm going to open the floor to the pub, for the, to the public. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to this, this agenda item? Regarding the potential appointment of a, of a board member? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to assume that the silence means that nobody wishes to speak on that. So at this point in time, before we entertain nominations, as we proceed to deliberation, I want to offer to my fellow board members, if they so desire, to share their perspectives on the candidates. If they want to share that to the other, other, other members of this body before we proceed to actually entertain nominations. Start with Mr. Stonebreaker. Do you have any perspectives you want to share?
Sure. So I had the opportunity to run into Mr. Wilson and his other capacity last fall when I was trying to get a better understanding of how other Recreation and Park districts function relative to ours. And my observation is that staff ran that district, much as staff has been, for the most part, running ours. He is obviously very well acquainted with governance and with the intimate details of Recreation and Park District specifically. I have run into Jolene many times over the last seven years through the Long Term Recovery Group that later became the Camp Fire Collaborative. Many of us have burned out and she keeps on chugging. We had the opportunity a few years back to host one of the meetings at the facility over like on Peach by the hospital where they were receiving donations. I got a very good understanding of the work that was being done over there. And appreciate her commitment to the community. Also, the fact that she's had these one-on-one discussions with former director Belfei implies that she has an understanding of the duties of this particular position, even if her work, Jolene's work, has primarily been in the nonprofit sphere rather than the public sector. And I, I appreciate Mr. Snow's clear passion for the town of Paradise and for especially youth recreation. And I want to say that this, this district encompasses more than that. And we certainly would love to have him involved, maybe through the volunteer program. But I question whether he would be ready to take on all of these additional duties at this time.
Thank you for sharing your perspective, Mr. Stonebreaker. Director Rodwick, any perspective, comments?
Yes. First of all, thank you, thank you all three of you for being here and showing interest in here. It's, it's evident that all of you are abundantly qualified to fill this position. The stark reality is we can only choose one of you. But I would, I would ask that for those who, the other two who are not selected tonight, we still have opportunity here in the district for volunteer work, for, for just coming to the meetings and, and telling us what you think because of, that, that's how we make our decisions, is by, by public input. So I, I, again, I just want to thank you. I, I wish, you know, I wish there were three openings on this board. But I'll leave it at that.
I'd like to share some of my perspective too. Actually, I have a very similar perspective as, as expressed by Director Stonebreaker relative to all three candidates. But personally, I really am pleased and, and, and I feel honored that you all showed this interest in this possible appointment. Suffice it to say, I believe all three of you were the fact that this appointment, if it's made amongst you, you would serve the duration of, of, of the term that our, our prior director was, was elected to, which would be the remainder of this calendar year and all of 2026. And then that position would be then subject to election process, similar to other board positions. Just hopefully you're all aware of that. So anyway, having said that, at this point in time, I'm going to close this item to the floor. And we're going to proceed as a board, gentlemen, to entertain a motion to nominate a candidate for appointment to vacancy.
I would like, excuse me, I would like to nominate Brian Wilson.
Are there any other nominations? I'll nominate Jolene Levy.
Mr. Chair, just point of order. So once a motion is made, we need a second.
A second, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're doing it by motion. I apologize. Is there a second to that motion?
Perhaps staff can clarify?
Yes.
The sequence thing here?
It's a super awkward process and we do have Marcia online to correct what I might misstate. But the, the way the process works is there's a motion and then a second. If there's not a second, you move on to another nomination and a second. In which case, board members would vote on that couplet there. Once there is a majority vote on something, that's the, the candidate that is, is selected. Once there is a nomination, it can be cycled back through. That has happened before. But there, there is a kind of a motion, second, there's a second, there's a vote. If it dies for lack of a second, then you go on to the next nomination for the process.
Question for the, and with a missing board member here, it is my understanding that it has to be unanimous between the three of us?
No, it's, it's, we, we have a quorum and be a majority vote.
Okay.
Yeah. I want to just make sure that there's, get positive response from Marcia on it. If, Marcia, if you want to chime in. And Sunny, by the way, it was star six, star six to unmute.
Hi, I was asked to unmute, but I am not Marcia, so I'm going to re-mute, sorry.
So our guest is not Marcia? But I, I, I'm confident that's, that's the process and it is laid out in, in the materials there. But I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you, Dan. That's helpful. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I'm going to declare the motion has died for lack of second. Is there anyone who wishes to make another motion?
I would like to nominate Jolene Levy.
Okay, now quick, we have a motion that's been made to nominate. Actually, the motion should not be to nominate, but to appoint, I believe. Is that correct?
Is that?
That, that's correct.
Correct. So let me restate then. I will move to appoint Jolene Levy.
Okay, now quick, we have a motion that's been made on the floor. Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion? I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. We will proceed with a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Director Steve Rocker?
Aye.
Secretary John Stonebreaker?
Aye.
Chairperson Alma Green?
Aye.
Motion carries the three ayes.
All right, did it again, I'm sorry. Congratulations, Jolene, you've been appointed to serve, um, on this board. Uh, bear in mind that there are, are requirements that you need to fulfill in a timely manner and I'll ask you to coordinate that with our district manager and staff. This is no reflection on the other two candidates. I think you're both very qual- qualified people and I re- I hope, quite frankly, that when the opportunity affords itself, that you get engaged with our district in some capacity. Sometimes we occasionally create ad hoc committees and so forth. Or, or, or just even attend a meeting now and then, just, uh, really would be appreciated. Um, so we're going to ask, uh, Jolene to come forward and we can administer the oath of office. Uh, and I'm going to ask the, uh, district manager or to, uh, administer that oath, uh, with you, Jolene.
Actually, Mr. Chair, we have, we have this written up for, um, your administration. So if you want to, I'll, I'll bring it up to you.
Okay, um, do you have your microphone on too?
Yeah.
Okay, um, uh, so repeat after me. Aye, in your name.
Jolene Levy.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm so sorry. Let me back up. We don't do this very often. Um, yeah, um, I, Jolene, your name.
I'm Jolene.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true allegiance.
True faith and-
True faith and allegiance to the United States. The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of invasion.
And that I will and faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I, you, upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Okay. So I, Alma Green, uh, Board Chair of the Paradise Record Park District of Beaufort County, State of California, do hereby certify that a regular meeting of the said district held at Paradise, California, in said county on this 21st day of October 2025, that Jolene Levy was appointed to the Office of Director for a term of, Madam Clerk, how many months?
Thirteen.
Thirteen months to expire in December 2026. In witness thereof, I will sign this document. Okay? Thank you very much, Jolene.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you to you guys. You guys were absolutely amazing. Yeah.
So at this point in time, I'm going to close this item and proceed to, I can't find it, I lost it. Proceed to, uh, the next item in the agenda, which is to declare this meeting adjourned. So thank you everyone, we, we are now adjourned.